Sean Maudsworth, Chair of the Planning Board, calling our monthly meeting to order at 6:32. Let's just do quick introductions.
Lawrence West.
Brian Bailey.
Amalia Torres.
Jim Dron.
And I'll appoint Amalia Torres as a voting member for this meeting with Curtis Coleman being excused. That's that. First order of business is the minutes from last month, September 9th. Did everyone have a chance to review?
Yeah.
Who else? Yes?
I don't think I was here.
You maybe weren't here?
I did look at him, but I don't believe I was here.
So, let's see. You're in, Curtis.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah. Alright, well, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second, thank you. Any further discussion? You're not. All those in favor?
Staying.
Staying, thank you. Motion carries. With Brian there standing. Select Board Report.
We've got a few things going on, I guess. We talked about creating a Chapel Committee. I don't know if we've all heard about that. We're gonna have the building inspected, hopefully here next week, just to make sure we know the condition of the building before we make any decisions on doing anything. We got some quotes on fixing the steeple roof. We had Historical Society for Conway come in and look at a bunch of the items in the chapel, along with some other people from the town Conway Library and they're gonna submit something in writing to give us an idea of what they think is in their value to them, to us, the town. So that'll come in writing and move forward to decide what to do with that.
For just the steeple repair?
Well, no, the building inspection to make sure that the building's fine before we waste the time doing the steeple, but also to inspect the steeple to make sure it's sound. And then the committee is more so to decide what to do with that space. Come up with some ideas, so if anyone knows anyone who would be willing to be involved in the Chapel Committee and to help decide, you know, what we should do with that space and how we go about it.
I would like to visit the chapel. I mean, I'm always convinced of all that, yeah?
Yeah. We're gonna write up a little brief description on what our goal is with the committee. And then we'll start having a meeting or two, I guess, and get that rolling. We talked about repairing the roof on the Town Hall. It needs to be re-screwed down. That's been given a go-ahead, so we're gonna get the contractor to do that. The other thing we talked about is budgets, getting all the departments to turn in their budgets sooner than later. With the new town administrator, it'd be best to get that all rolling.
Yeah.
Keep it rolling.
I think we're... Planning Board is all submitted?
Yeah. I think that's it.
Awesome. I had a question. The Route 16 stuff.
Yeah.
That, you know, that apparently there was something passed at the state level where towns can have a say in lowering the speed limit down to 45?
From what I understand, that bill died on the table?
Damn it.
Yeah.
It didn't pass?
It didn't pass, no.
Unfortunate.
But as far as Route 16 goes, we've got a... There's a company called GM2 Associates that is getting involved and they're working on all the impacts, whether it be environmental, social, economic, cultural, and they're asking all the departments and residents just to submit what they have concerns about. So we've been tasked to pass that along and get as much information as we can.
GM2?
GM2 Associates, Inc.
And where in 16 was requested to lower the speed when 45 approaching in Albany or?
Yeah, that, so they were trying to do that, but that bill padded down, died on the table, so it didn't pass, yeah.
So is that gonna be mailed out to the residents, the input, or is there a hearing?
Yeah, I'm not sure how they're doing it, other than this email that we got. It's an email with, let's see, 10 questions, basically. They're just looking for a response from the town administrator, the planning board, the select board, confirmation, Conservation Commission, and the red action. I assume maybe you got this email?
I did, I just, well, I just got the letter. I saw it in there. So then that is Planning Board point of business. We could discuss that as well. Since you have it there, let's just do that. Would you mind reading?
No, that's fine. Number one is, does the town have a list of priority mitigation efforts, top 10 priority lists, priorities that may be evaluated and considered if it is determined that the project does in fact require mitigation? If so, please provide the list, like problematic culvert, bridge crossings, land protection, habitat restoration, et cetera.
Yeah. I would think we probably don't have a list unless the Select Board does.
No, we don't have it. I don't think anything has been done yet, other than acknowledging the...
And I think you'd have to see what type of impacts they are in order for us to...
Right, yeah, we're gonna come up with that list, yeah.
Yeah, but there's certain areas that are already protected, like where it goes Lovejoy Marsh. That's nature conservancy protected land. Anywhere it crosses a water, of course, would be... I don't know, cultural, historical, significant stuff.
Right, yeah.
But it's not mapped out, yeah. Okay, what was number two?
Number two is, are there any existing or proposed community or regional plans that might have a bearing on this project?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, number three is, are there any natural resources of significance in the vicinity of the project? Like prime wetlands, floodplains, rare species? Are there any known wildlife corridors or habitat strongholds in the vicinity of the project? Number four, are there any cultural resources of significance in the vicinity of the project? Stonewalls, cemeteries, historical or archaeological resources? Please note that Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act offers those that poses a direct interest in historical resources, including city officials, historical societies, and historical commissions, an opportunity to become more involved in advisory role during the project development as consulting parties. Those interested should contact the department. Number five is, are there any public parks, recreation areas, conservation lands, or water life, water fowl, refugees in the vicinity of the project? Have land and water conservation funds been used in the project area? Number six, are there any locally or regionally significant water resources or related protection areas in the project vicinity? Public water supplies, wellhead protection areas, aquifer protection districts? Number seven, are there any water quality concerns that should be addressed during the development of this project? Stormwater management, NPDES Phase 2 impaired waters? Number eight is, are you aware of any existing or potential hazardous materials or contaminants in the vicinity of the project? Are there asbestos landfills or asbestos containing utility pipes located within the project limits? Number nine, do you have any environmental concerns not previously noted? Noise impacts, farmland conservation, et cetera, that you feel we should be aware of for this project? And number 10, are you aware of any existing roadside populations of non-native invasive plant species such as Japanese knopwood, aragmites, or purple loosestrife?
But that is a sort of two ages because there is a kind of bees that only, only feeds who lose the strife. Yeah, then if we eradicate it, we're killing bees.
So that's it?
Alright. I'm not thinking of any resources that the Planning Board has to answer those questions right off definitively. It would more just be a discussion of what things.
Right.
And I'd imagine we'll do the same thing at the Conservation Commission, but it would mostly be pointing out the obvious water resources would be, I think, the big one in my mind.
It kind of feels like, you know, these questions almost seem to be geared towards a new project too, right? Route 16 is already here.
It is, yeah.
So...
It's the widening, shifting.
Yeah, is there, you know, how much additional is it six feet, you know? So it seems to be it's a more of a minor rather than building a whole new road, obviously, then it'd be... I feel like there'd be a lot more discussion and concern, as there should be.
Yeah, if there's a stone wall on this side, then leave the stone wall alone and widen it on the other side, kind of thing. Yeah. Okay, nothing about speed, unfortunately.
Nothing about speed, but it does mention noise. I know there's been a lot of talk of, you know, limiting brake brakes or engine brake noise and stuff like that, so maybe that's something we should voice.
And rumble strips too, I guess, would be the other.
Because the rumble, the rumble strips are in this project. There are rumble strips. I don't know if they're center, but there are rumble strips.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, that's the general concern from the Planning Board to share the Select Board, I guess. Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
So CIP, this is the one we do need to... Have, has this come up more at Select Board level?
No.
We'll just go through it again quick here. So Chapel Capital Reserve Fund, our first line here. We have an estimated 50,000, so you're getting a building inspector to come in and give an assessment of the whole building? And they're gonna give an assessment of repair as well?
If, yeah.
Okay, and that's happening in the next?
Should happen by the next week.
Oh, great. Okay, so that can be updated with a real number?
Yeah.
Hopefully. That sounds fantastic, because I suspect 50,000 is low.
Right.
We'll see.
We'll see.
So that's good. We're getting some data. Town Hall, Property Capital Reserve Fund, so like for the roof getting repaired. And there's, you don't have an estimate for that?
Yeah, it's estimated, it's at $3,000 to repair the roof.
Do the repair?
That's been approved and is, it's gonna be done and...
Yep. And then this gross capital cost of 30,000 is a number that's been there. I'm not sure that it's based on too much.
Right, and I think there was talk of repaving and doing a bunch of stuff out front, which means grading. I guess you gotta grade it different if it's too high, so...
So there's not a puddle there?
So that, yeah, probably needs to be addressed and that never updated, probably, yeah.
So is that all getting a estimate?
I'm not sure where that is. I think there is an estimate. There is an estimate, I believe there is.
In front here?
Yes, in front, yeah. I'm pretty sure there's an estimate that has been done.
So that's just for outside site work? The bill, this is for the building as a whole, so like top to bottom, everything? So I don't know if there's other things that Select Board knows about that need addressing?
As far as the building goes, I haven't heard of anything that's stated out, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Emergency Management, this has been estimated at 6,100. It's been there that way. We're at 5,100 right now, so just with this year's contribution, we would be meeting that target. In which case, if that target of 6,000 is actually legitimate, then we should step down the contributions over the other year with the subsequent...
Yeah, one thing I was thinking about, the Town Hall is a shelter.
Shelter, yes, designated shelter.
Yes, a designated shelter, but I don't know that we're equipped and with anything to, you know, if we were to house a shelter, how would we do that?
Yeah.
You know, it's not like we have provisions of water or blankets or cots or... I may not even know what we would need to do, but it seems like we would need more than what we have.
Probably. Is there a generator?
This place runs on a generator, yes. It has a backup generator.
A backup generator?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that could be very expansive and expensive.
Right.
But it's been minimalist so far because...
Yeah.
So... I don't know. I don't know.
I'll make a note of that.
Yeah.
Bring it up.
To see if there are things that the Select Board wants to invest in, in terms of emergency management? Highway Expendable Trust Fund. So this has these, well, they all have these little number asterisk things. One is for future spot repair, paving of Bald Hill and Passa Conway Road. Number five is for the flat grant, which I believe is not happening, right?
Yeah, I don't remember if that's what he said last.
That is a no-go, so that could probably be removed. Six other spot repairing of Albany roads that may surface, so general. And seven, cash flow funds for flat grant and red list bridge grant funding, so it's just to provide cash flow for those. Again, not needed. So we have this estimate number, again, don't know quite where it came from, of 1.3 million. And the current balance as of September was 107,000. And we are projected to put 60,000 each year into this. I don't have expertise in this or knowledge, really, so I'm just looking at everyone, anyone else, you know?
That one person.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, he knows this number here.
And I think when he was here, it was when we updated it to 60,000 a year, because I think it was a lower number. The Drake Hill Road Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, again. So there's, I think what I've been understanding is there's not gonna be any match program, or there isn't a match program. It's not existing, non-functioning. So it's the one and if we're funding this fully ourselves, is this 3/4 million a real number that will adequately allow us to fund a replacement of this bridge? And where we're at right now is about 110, putting in 8,000 a year. So if the target is something like 3/4 of a million, putting in 8,000 a year is gonna take us a very long time. And, you know, we could kind of arbitrarily raise this number, but I would really want some people that know something about how this is actually gonna work. Cemeteries estimated at 25,000, has a balance of 23,000, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, I think they can say the same.
And at 1,000 a year for funding? And then the Revaluation Trust Fund, estimated cost of 20,000, the balance is 19, and we're putting in 3,500 a year, which is the amount divided by however offput is every five years. So the cost of getting the revaluation every five years breaks down to about 3,500 a year, so that's what we're doing there. So, I guess, Jim, for the Select Board, it's Chapel Capital Reserve, Town Hall Capital Reserve, Emergency Management, Highway Expendable, and Drake Hill Bridge Expendable. And if the Select Board wants to have a CIP meeting outside of Select Board time, where myself and anyone else that wants to join to just finally hammer this out?
Yeah.
We can do that? I'd be willing to do that. What's that? Alright, CIP review. Alright, next Planning Board meeting is scheduled for a Monday, Veterans Day holiday, just like today was a holiday. Do we wanna reschedule or just keep it? I'm fine.
Fine.
What date is it?
The 11th, I believe.
November 11th?
Yeah, November 11th.
Yeah.
Veterans Day.
Yes.
Leave it as is?
Yeah.
I got your signature, Brian. There's nothing happening immediately, but I did get an email from HEB Engineers that they will be submitting something for Habitat Humanities Subdivision. So probably at the next meeting, we'll be having a subdivision application on hand.
Is there anything that I should look at, being new to the whole Planning Board thing and subdivisions and and this project? I haven't...
Other than just reading through to familiarize yourself with the ordinances, just when it presents, we'll post for a public meeting and read through the checklist to make sure the application's complete. If it is complete, then it'll be accepted, and then we would have the public hearing on the subdivision. And if it meets all the criteria, then it... We pretty much are obligated to approve it.
Right.
Yeah. If it doesn't meet the criteria, then you get into all the change this, change that, come back.
Gotcha.
Because we reviewed a design mobile ago, right?
Yeah.
It had, did have some...
Some things that did not meet our ordinances, right? So that's, they went back to the drawing board, so we don't know what the new proposal is, but they have a new proposal. And then it's to the ordinances and definitions and changing, so I sent an email with what I got from North Country Council. I don't know if anyone, did I send that? I didn't send it?
I, you might have. I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Oh, you did.
Glance at it. I haven't read it enough yet either.
The gist of it is that there's a lot of things that are kind of loose ends and messy in our ordinances. And, yes, you can change a definition or two, but that doesn't fix all the other loose ends. And that we really kind of should have more of a comprehensive review, which I'm in support of. I don't know how everyone else feels, but as opposed to tweaking a little thing here and there, I think if we have some known areas of ambiguity or loose ends or holes that you can drive a truck through, it should probably be addressed. I don't find myself able to identify all the holes, because I don't know what I don't know. And collectively, I don't think we've been able to identify what we don't know or what even we want it to go to. So in this regard, I would really be a strong advocate of getting a professional to come in and review our ordinances with us. There are people from New Hampshire that have been doing this for years for a bunch of different towns. And I asked one of them, Tara Bamford, for an estimate quote to go through that process. I haven't gotten the quote yet, but I think that's what we need.
Yeah, get a review, get some ideas, and then we can...
Yeah.
I hate to take our ordinances and turn it into something that's city-like or anything like that, you know, it's...
Agreed.
Want to fix some holes, but maintain Albany.
Yes. And that's Tara's, you know, she's done that. It's all tailored to the individual town. I asked the question, is there such a thing as a model zoning ordinance? That we could at least work off of and think about? And it doesn't even exist, because every town wants to have its own unique thing, so there is no model zoning ordinance. That said, there are commonalities among towns and what they have in their zoning and and there's ways that it can be written well, and there's a gazillion ways it can be written poorly. I think we have a lot of room to improve it. We'll see. I don't have anything, too much to present, other than that email, so if you didn't read it, go back and read it. There's a good bit of information in it. North Country Council people did some good research and came up with some... I asked them about those definitions, building, dwelling, residential unit, whatever it was, four or five things. And just those four or five things, they produced a pretty long document on like, here's all the weird ways that that could be misinterpreted, basically, given how your zoning ordinances are right now. So if that, those five definitions were indicative of how loose our ordinances are, then, you know...
I sat down with the document and I started to highlight because I said, I won't remember.
Yes.
You know, then I started to highlight and things like that and sometimes I find out like, you know, I don't understand what is the definition between, you know, a dwelling that is the main house, but if it is attached, then it has a name, and if it is three feet apart, it has another name, then, I mean, it's a, it's like a very vague description of, you know, why, because, I mean, they all do, there is one that I I remember, I sort of love because it says that the description is attached if you have a sewer, you know, like, you know, but otherwise, if you don't have a, how do you call it? A septic field, yeah, I mean, then it's not a house, yeah? Then, I mean, it's a, we discussed that in the first meeting that I attended here. That's why I also remember that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because you can have a barn, as long as it doesn't have a bathroom in it, it's not a dwelling unit.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, the money was like that. You put the barn and then there's a house, and you're taxed as a house. Yeah, no escape, yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, Curtis was here saying, you know, he felt strongly that you should be able to put a bathroom in anything.
Yeah, you know, it's, you say workshop, you can't have running water and, you know. But it's a, it's a. Term dwelling, and it kept saying sleep, cook, eat, and sanitation. And in my head, I kept saying, okay, if it's any more than two of those, maybe that's when it becomes a dwelling. You know, maybe you have a restroom and cots, and that's a bunkhouse, or whatever, that's not a dwelling. Or a garage, that someone has a workshop and they have a restroom in it. It's tricky. That's probably where we need some.
Agree. Guidance and help.
Yeah, so if you take some of the definitions that are in there, they're, they're kind of vague. And then in the ordinances, they don't always use the terms that be defined in the definitions. We define the definitions and then use them in our ordinances.
Properly.
I think that's the.
That'll be a big help. And I think the reality is, nothing's gonna happen for March 2025. I know that was the ask from the select board to get these definitions tightened up, but again, we could, we can just change the definition, but I don't think it's wise or proper, really. It's not planning. It's ad hoc.
Yeah, take the time to it, right?
So that's all I have for this evening. Anything else from anyone else?
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor? Meeting adjourned, seven oh four.